I'll call the meeting to order. We've had a couple of technical difficulties getting the live stream going, so we're going to proceed with the meeting and just record, record the video, so our apologies for that. So, welcome everyone on this nice fine day. It's good to get a day without a bunch of either wind or rain we've seen in the last while, so it's good to have a, have a nice, nice day out, so welcome. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as presented, please? Counselor Wyland, second, please. Counselor Hoffner. Any questions on that, or any additions to?
No additions.
Okay, so all in favor of that? And that is carried, thank you. Does anybody have any conflict of interest with any items on the agenda this evening? Counselor Wyland? Okay, anybody else have any items on conflict? Seeing none, we'll move on, thank you. We will ask you to leave, leave the room when we get to that item, thank you. Okay, we have a motion to approve two sets of minutes. First of all, there's the minutes of the regular council meeting that was held May 25th, 2020, that's on page three. Can I get a motion to adopt that one, please? Counselor Pratcher, Counselor Nordic, any questions, errors, or omissions on that? No, seeing none, okay, all in favor? Opposed, that's carried, thank you. And the next one is item B, and that's the minutes of the special meeting of council held June 8th, 2020, and that's on page seven. Motion and second on that one, please. Counselor Beehill, second, please. Counselor Jorgensen. Any questions, errors, or omissions on that one? Okay, seeing none. I'll call a question, all in favor? Opposed, that's carried, thank you. Nothing under delegations? Okay, correspondence, we have a number of items under correspondence. You know what, can I just circle back here? I had a couple of public acknowledgements that I skipped over, so sorry. Can we just do that before we go on to item six? I've got two things that I wanted to acknowledge here today, and they're pretty important, and I apologize for skipping over that. First of all, a week ago, Sunday, we had a storm event here in the community. We're all aware of it. It was quite scary at a number of times, and I'd just like to give a shout out to our, to our staff. We had a number of works and utility staff that were out working, checking on our lift stations and just their catch basins throughout the city on a Sunday afternoon, so they were all called in and, and put in their time protecting our city, also to our fire department. A number of them were busy patrolling, blocking off streets, helping out at the lift station. I spoke with a number of them during the day, the fire chief was busy trying to keep people from driving and drowning their cars on the roads and to the city manager and, and public works director. And the fire chief, that we all kind of got together and everybody pulled in the right direction and got us through that. It was, as I said, it was a scary situation for a number of hours there, and we thought we were going to get hit with a second storm later on in the evening. Unfortunately, unfortunately, it didn't, didn't materialize the way we thought it was gonna, so. So just hats off to everybody that really pulled, pulled together for that event, and I sure hope those don't happen very often, because we got a deluge of rain in a very short period of time, so. I try telling people that no matter what kind of system you have, it's not gonna keep up to that, and I know we've done a lot of work in the last, last number of years, and I know we still have some work to do yet, but it certainly helped. I shuddered, I did post this on social media. I shuddered to see what would have happened if we wouldn't have had that reservoir on Seventeenth Street and a number of the other overflow projects that we've been working diligently on the last number of years, what would have, what would have happened to some of those residents, because they were nip and tuck as, as it was, and there was a whole pile of water that that retention pond held back until, you know, later that evening, so. So thanks again for everybody. The other one I wanted to point out is the Chamber of Commerce Mark of Excellence Awards were held here last week, and I was able to attend via via Zoom meeting, and I know there was a lot of other people that did the same, and I'd just like to say thanks to the chamber for recognizing. They put that together under extreme circumstances, I think, with COVID. I think they were, what, two days away from having that event before, when the, when the, I guess, the pin was pulled from that, as it was with another, a bunch of other events in the community and in the, in the province. But they did a really good job, remarkable job of putting that all together. It was, it was good to recognize everybody, just a combination of what they did beforehand and during the live, the live feed. It was good to see all those people recognize. I'd just like to make one, to point one, one thing out. I don't like to single anybody out on any awards, but just the entrepreneur award that went to the Brockman Brothers for, for Brockman Enterprises for all the work. I know they're, they're partners with the city on a lot of our projects, and I know that over the years, they've been a real help to the city, so I'd just like to say a shout out to Murray and Don Brockman for their award into the Wall of Fame, I believe they call it, on the Chamber of Commerce and the Uniplex there. So if anybody ever gets a chance to go take a look, there's some pretty important business people that are recognized on that, so. So I'll turn the floor over to anybody else that has anything to say on anything. Counselor Wyland?
I just thought it was fitting, now that we just had our Humboldt District Hospital Foundation AGM, to publicly acknowledge Mark Deckberger from Universal Sports for that great fundraiser that he did for the hospital, raising almost, I think he's just shy of $500 with his fundraiser, shaving his head and getting a lot of donations for doing so, so I would just like to publicly acknowledge Mark and thank him for his contribution to the community. These are trying times right now to be able to do these kind of fundraisers amidst the COVID pandemic, I think, is just a really great thing, and thank you. My second acknowledgement, I'm not sure if this is the right place, but I didn't know where to put it, and I do want to acknowledge all the great staff we have here at City Hall and all our departments and my fellow city councillors. I'm just at the same time announcing that I am not seeking a third term on city council. I was kind of advised by somebody that actually had some conversations with me. They were doing an article for the paper, which she may have read last week about women in politics, and I did mention I wasn't planning on running, and she suggested that I should announce sooner than later, so that it would get women thinking about running for politics, and if we wanted to see women's name on the ballot, I'm not having so. I've announced it now formally, and now nobody can twist my arm to run, because I've already made it public. But anyway, it's been great, but I said, you know, we're getting on eight years now, and got some additions to my family, and we're hoping to retire, and well, travel may be out of the question, but I did want to announce it, so. Now with COVID, it was kind of hard to announce it, and then now I think we sound that we are able to have our municipal elections in the fall, so I thought it was appropriate, so. People can be thinking it. I know my fellow councillors, it will not come as a surprise, because I did give them notice at the SUMA convention in February, it was still SUMA at that time, that I was not running, and I think Mary were not at president at SUMA that year, but I did, we did have a just an informal discussion, I did announce my intentions, and so I know it comes no surprise to my fellow councillors, but thank you for all your help and everything over the years, and probably will miss it just a little bit, but looking forward to new face.
Well, thank you for, for doing that, and thank you for your service over the years, Counselor Wyland. And it's never an easy decision, and I know that, that there's, I think the way you're doing it now to encourage other women to, to run, I think is important, and I've been trying to get the message out, and I think any of the other councillors that are maybe out and about in the community and see any candidates that are, that are, that are willing to put their name forward. I know women around this table have been, I think, lacking over the years. There's been a few over the years, but it would be nice to see some more, so I think if we can encourage that to happen, I think that's a good idea, so. Yeah, so again, thank you for your service, and I'm sure we'll have another opportunity over the next couple of months to, to say thanks again, but thank you for, for doing that, so. Okay, anybody else have anything else to bring up? Okay, thank you. So we'll go back on to item six. Skip back up to that, and that's items requiring council resolution, so there's two items on here. First is the mayor's recognition of Humboldt area's Refugee Coalition, June 20th, World Refugee Day, and so that, that has happened already, and we did put a flag up, and it's flying right now at City Hall, so this is just to, to mark this officially on our agenda here, so. Very worthwhile cause, I know our local group does a lot of work and fundraisers at the community gathering place. I know they've done a number of musical fundraisers there over the years. They're always good to go to, so. So I will look for a motion to make that declaration, please. Counselor Nordic, and I see Counselor Beehill, seconding. Any further discussion on this? Okay, all in favor? And that is carried. Is there a paperwork to do?
It wasn't a proclamation, it was just a recognition.
Okay, a recognition, okay, good, okay, thank you. Okay, and the next one is Community Leisure Services, and that's the Canada Day Road Closure, so that's basically, we've got a map that's been presented. So it's basically Fifth Avenue during the fireworks, and I think it's just for safety reasons. Looks like the ignition area is in the green box, I believe. Is that right on the map? Yeah, so just a safety precaution. You see the, the three barricades there, one to the north and east and west, so. Very, very simple, just needs to come to council to close the road, so. I guess I'll ask for a motion on that, please. Counselor Wyland, second, or Counselor Pratcher? Any further discussion on that? It looks like we'll, we'll get a little bit more of a report and under the Canada Day report later on, but it's, looks like staff has been very busy getting this all put together again under trying circumstances, so. It looks like they're doing a fantastic job getting something together. I know a lot of cities around the country have just totally counseled their Canada Day. And I know that council, we had said it was important to go ahead with this, and they've done a bang of job organizing it to meet the regulations by the province on this, so. Thank you, okay. Moving on, do we, did I call the question? No, all in favor? That's carried, thank you. Okay, so then we have items received for information only. We have the minutes of the district museum and gallery board meeting, that's from June 3rd, 2020, and that's on page 11. I'll just let everybody scroll up to that. Counselor Wyland, did you have anything you wanted to add from the minutes that are there?
I don't know if I have anything to add. We did have a fair bit of discussion at our executive council meeting about this particular meeting and the, I guess, the wishes of the, of the board that we get our summer operations and our staff back and our summer students hired and our positions filled again to carry on, hopeful that our phase four B will hopefully be announced soon and hopefully be opening sooner than later and to get, you know, everything back the way it was, so I guess that was kind of the big discussion in our meeting here, and so we've had discussion at the executive level, so I don't think I need to add anything more. Unless somebody has any questions.
I think just a comment with phases coming, that sometimes they, they seem like they're so far away, but sometimes they come quicker than you really are prepared, so it's, it's good to, you know, have, have the plan in place, so that when the date is announced, and even with this outdoor pool thing, I know in Regina, they weren't able to open their pools up, because they only had a week's notice, and it's just something, you know, if you guys start hiring staff and, and, you know, I know we had our spray park open today, because it's not a real staff intensive thing. Somebody just has to go there and do quick maintenance and turn it on, but when you're dealing with staff and hiring and everything else, it's pretty important that we kind of get everything, all the ducks, our ducks in a row, as they say, and make sure that, that it's ready to go when the date is called, so. Okay, thank you. Item B is, we'll do these all with one motion at the end. Item B is the Mid-Saski municipal alliance board meeting held June 4th, 2020. I was in attendance on that via Zoom. I'll just maybe, again, the letter that we sent to them was, was presented at that meeting. There was, I, I guess I would say there were some disappointed members there from the other communities, but they already started talking about ways to, I guess, keep, keep going and keep things moving, so. One of the other events are, that happened there, and it's, it's included in your, in your package. Here is the Social Investment Program from BHP. This is a program that they've committed $100,000 to, and NSMA will be the administrator of that money, so the details will be coming out very quickly, I think. I let my name stand on the, the committee that's helping to decide which groups get the funding, so. Basically, it's open to any, I believe it's within 100 kilometers of the mine site. So there's going to be a lot of communities applying and different groups applying, so even though $100,000 sounds like a lot of money. One thing I did mention is like the Good Neighbor story here, how much they give, how much they have been hurt. Excuse me, you know, so that was a good, a good thing for BHP to do, so. Okay, any further questions on BHP, on, on that program, or? Okay, and if not, I'll just move on to the next item. That would be the minutes of the Humboldt Broncos Memorial Committee, held March 10th. Counselor Jorgensen, did you, you chaired that meeting? Do you have anything to add to that?
No, I think it's one of themselves.
We've had another meeting since then, so we'll wait that for the next council meeting, I'm sure. Lots of good work being done. Okay, the next one is Canadian Federation of Independent Business. That's an open letter to Saskatchewan Cities. That's on page 23. Any questions on that one? I know they're asking and using some examples of cities that have, you know, done things like reducing tax rates and business licenses for cities. I know we've, we've done, and we've talked about this before a number of times, is the approach we've taken here about, you know, trying to do it on a one-on-one basis, and you know, I look at some of the recommendations that they're doing about, you know, eliminating business licenses and that type of thing, which, it may help some of the home base and smaller businesses, but, you know, on the grand scheme of things, I think, as we, the program we're doing, I think, makes more sense, so. Does anybody else have any comments on this, this letter? We'll receive it for information, I guess, when we make the motion. I think that went out to pretty much all the other cities in the province. Okay, oh, Counselor Nord?
I'm just curious about the uptake that we've had to, to our program, that, I haven't heard a lot about that, so.
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Nordic, last I heard, there was a total of four businesses or four commercial properties, rather, four commercial properties that had kind of contacted the city and modified their arrangements under the terms of the property tax program. I think it all, I think those four properties were represented by two or three business owners or property owners. So, and again, that's keeping in mind that that was probably three weeks ago, four weeks ago was the last I got that update. I don't think much has changed, but of course, tax notices just went out in the last day or two, so they're just being received today. So I'm guessing we might get a few more inquiries about it in the next few days, but certainly the uptake thus far on the property tax side of it hasn't been very significant at all. And on the utility bill side of it, there has been slightly more uptake on it against, I think it was still something like half a dozen or thereabouts, number of properties affected, but I would suggest that we're always dealing with about that number of people on special arrangements on the utility bills anyways. So I don't think anything too dramatic has occurred because of it.
So were you referring to commercial in that aspect, too, or, or is it residential?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I was actually referring to commercial, thinking about commercial coming from this letter, but I think for maybe commercial properties, and I don't know if there's any residential properties. If there was, it was only one or two. And I, I think that as businesses are open and time goes on, I think that's when we may see a little bit more of this uptake, too, and especially now that the tax notices are out, but I think the business people I've talked to are holding their own, I guess, but, you know, we're not out of the woods by any means, I don't think. You know, the ones that have reopened, I, I think are not nearly as busy as they were before, you know, they're, so we may see, as time goes on, we may see a bigger uptake in this, and I think that's why it's important to have this, to have this program in place, because there is definitely businesses that are really hard hit. And then on the other hand, there is others that have been doing more business than before COVID, and just because of the nature of the business they're doing, so I think the approach we've taken as not being a blanket approach is, is the right one to do, and we certainly will work with those that really need, need help, and and that's why we encourage and I, you know, spread the word around, if you know of any business people that are, are struggling, to make sure that they, that they, you know, contact City Hall and, and see what we can do to help, so. Okay, so we have four items, A, B, C, and D. I'll look for motion to receive all of those items for information only, please. Counselor Pratcher, Counselor Nordic, any further discussion on any of these items? Okay, all in favor? Opposed, that's carried, thank you. Committee reports, so we have item number seven is Minutes of the Executive Committee Meeting, held June 8th, 2020. Counselor Hoffner was the chair of that meeting, so I will turn the floor over to you for a motion for receiving this. Any discussion, that's results from minutes. Okay, I would like a, a motion and a second to accept the minutes from those people in the, in the Counselor Beehill and the Secretary, Counselor Pratcher, to accept those, the information offered from all the minutes. Accept the information to be filed with the city. So all of their recommendation, there was no, there was no recommendations. It was just, if you probably read the, you were at the meetings and you read the, the agenda for, for tonight, so. I guess, does anybody have a question regarding that? In regards to coming on to that meeting, thank you.
No questions, Counselor Hoffner, but just one comment, and it goes back to the planning coordinators' report on the backyard chicken, chicken pilot project. This, this project intrigued me when it first came up, and I, I applaud residents for coming up with ideas that can make our community better and different, and, and the thing that intrigued me the most was the education aspect of it. And I've really, myself, working in agriculture, I've really noticed that there's quite a disconnect between those who produce the food and those who consume the food, and we've lost a lot of understanding of what goes into, goes into our food, and I thought this would be a good opportunity to, for people to learn a little bit about it. But since we've announced that pilot project, there's been a fair amount of opposition, and some of it, very strong opposition, we'll say, and when I look at the big picture, I think I came to a point that I said, you know what, it's not either the time, or it's going to be, create too much animosity between residents and neighbors and those who want and those who don't want. So as much as I followed it through and wanted to, to explore it more, I can see at this point it's not going to be the best for our community, so that's where I voiced my, my opposition to it at this time.
Thanks. Does anybody else have any comments or questions? I would just like to, I guess, make a comment. We did, we did have a lot of discussion on this, as we all recall from that meeting. We called upon staff to do a certain amount of research, and I, I know personally I did, and I know other councillors that did a lot of other research as well on some of the questions we all had, like the pilot projects that were, were run throughout the province. It was indicated that as far as the planning coordinator could determine, there is no other municipalities in the province that are doing this, and although I like to look at Humboldt as being progressive in a lot of areas, I think we just had too many red flags. I did personally, anyway. And Counselor Pratcher did mention about animosity between residents and for every neighbor there is, or for every person, there's a neighbor on either side usually, and, and, you know, the whole idea of, you know, some of the research I did and some of the, the health issues and, you know. I, I did mention it during our meeting, and I'll mention it again. I was just poking around on the center of the disease control website and with looking for COVID information, and one of the first things that I saw there was the, you know, the amount of salmonella breaking out in a lot of the cities that have these types of situations in the states, and, and it's just something at this point, I don't think, in my mind, that we wanted to go, go down that road, and so that's, that was, that is what, you know, helped me make my, my mind up on it. I, I know there's going to be people disappointed in our decision, but I, I, as I always do when I make a decision, is try to look at the greater, the greater community. You know, we may have a half a dozen or a dozen residents that, you know, really wanted to do this, and but I have to think of the whole community, so that's how I made my decision, thanks.
Any other comments? So we've had a lot of time to research this, and, and I personally did a fair amount of research on, on myself, and and I still see in many communities that have tried it in the past, there's still always the concern about, about the disease that, that's comes along with this type of program, and so I'm concerned, just not just, I guess, not just within the city of Humboldt, I'm concerned about surrounding areas, the farms as well in the area. We've also, I think this council's worked really hard to keep our taxes low, and we've, over the years, recent years, we've cut a number of programs in an effort to keep our taxes low, and this is one program. The more research I did, the more it seemed to appear that it costs a lot of money to maintain and monitor this type of program, so. that it costs a lot of money to maintain and monitor this type of program, so, you know, that, that certainly was part of my consideration. And I guess, you know, we've, there's, I'm not sure that we have the capacity to, to, I guess, monitor it at all, it currently, and, and so that would, adding another member and other staff to it would also add to the cost, so I'm just opposed to this program for those reasons, because I think we've tried to keep our taxes low, and this is just a program that was very limited, a number of people expressed their, their feelings for it, echoing Councilor Proctor's words about, or Mayor's words about animosity, in this time that we've had, I've talked to everybody that I could talk to within the community that I've come in contact with, and I never got one single person that was in favor of having a chicken program in their next door, so that's another reason why I'm opposed to it.
Should we call the vote, or is there?
Thank you, I want to make one last comment, and it adds on to Councilor Wyland's comment earlier about staff and administration, and our planning coordinator, Frank, did a very good job of bringing a lot of information to us in a very unbiased form that we were able to, to take and use as a foundation for, for this decision also, so I want to thank Frank for that time and work and effort he put into that.
Yeah. Okay, call the vote? All those in favor? Carrie?
Thank you, you know, sir.
Okay, moving on, I, again, I'd like to echo what Councilor Proctor said about our staff doing these, when we originally had this request come, I know that was the first thing I thought of, is we've got to put this back to administration and make sure that we've got, got what we need to make decisions, and I applaud them for, for doing that, not only in this case, but a lot of other decisions we need to make, it's, we're all just regular people here, and I think we sometimes need to, to have staff dig, and they all have connections throughout the province with their, with their counterparts in other municipalities that they can draw on for this information, and usually, a lot of times, it's looking up to the, to the bigger cities that, that have gone through this already, so it's, it's nice to be able to draw on that knowledge, so thank you. Okay, item number eight is a city manager's report, we have two, two reports here, and they were split apart because Councilor Wyland asked to, or requested to, to, to call a conflict of interest on one of the items, and we didn't think it was fair for her to have to sit out for the whole, the whole discussion, so we separated it off, so. So I'll turn the floor over to the city mayor, so I'm assuming, is it item A is the one that, no, B, you're B, so okay, so I'll turn it over for item A, and then we can do that one, and then you can declare after that. Thank you, Mayor, yes, as no, this, these two reports, or this particular report, has to do with the MEET funding and the recommended allocations, or sorry, recommended projects to submit for MEET funding. I did create two reports, because part of, one of the projects does fall in Councilor Wyland's area, and it would be unfair for her to be involved in that discussion. So this first report covers recommendations, projects that are recommended, a total $703,542. The city of Humboldt received an allocation from the province of MEET funding of $843,542. And although there's almost an immeasurable and endless list of projects that I think the city could consider and go with, between discussions I've had with administration, discussions I've had with council members, and of course, at executive committee, the discussions we've had there, I've drawn a list of recommended projects, which I'll cover just briefly verbally, and then certainly if council has any questions about, any further questions about why they were on the list, and certainly you post those to me. For $75,000, Highway 5 turning lane into Centennial Park entrance, for an estimated cost of $75,000, another turning lane off of Highway 5 at the 21st Street intersection, again, for $75,000, boiler upgrades at the Uniplex, for $350,000, outdoor skating slash recreation flex space, for $20,000, conversion of the irrigation system at Glen Hall Park to use reclaimed water, for $20,000, a study, storm drainage study that would look at the station number one and the 16th Street area, and to balance out the allocation that we received from the province with the sum of all of the recommendations that I had presented to council, for $88,542, it'd go towards the 2021 16th Street water main replacements. Now, within the report to council, I've justified many of the rationale used for those, so I'm not going to get into that unless council wants to dig into it any further. Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? I know we all had a lot of input on, on this already, and we've had a chance to look at a number of these projects, a, a number of these have been, I guess, long term in the city that we've ever seen to be able to find the money to do at budget time, and so it's nice to add, be able to add some of these onto, onto this MEET funding. I'll just open the floor up if anybody has any comments on what made their decisions. So you were first.
I would put it on since I started.
I didn't catch light, so I'll go to Councilor Wyland and then Councilor Hoffner.
Well, I just want to start out by saying that I had declared conflict of interest at our executive meeting, and therefore I was not in the discussion at all about these projects, or how the decisions and I take at the council have a fair amount of input into the selection of these proposed projects then. So anyway, I, I just wanted to say that, and I, and I think they're all great projects. I'm close enough here with my microphone. The one biggest question to me, and I mean, and I think it's really important, especially now this last storm that week, seeing the street storm drainage study, that's very important, and the lift stations, always important to, to be upgrading and continuing that work. Glad to see the 16th Street water main replacements, and as that means that 16th Street will be on the list to get repaid next year then, so right, water mains one year and replacement the next, so our payment, really important, and there's many streets that could use that. My only comments about, and like I said, you only have, it's great we have this money, because we're getting lots of things done with this money, and I'm really happy to see that there's some replacement, would like to see more, but like I said, you do what best we can. My question is, and because I missed all the previous discussion, my flag only is about the outdoor skating and recreation flex space, $350,000, it seems like a lot of money for an outdoor rink. Is there, is this like, a normal cost to make an outdoor rink and a flex space? Like, it just seems like a high number, not, I'm saying, I'm not saying it's not important, but I just thought it seemed like a really expensive project for an outdoor rink, or is it because we're getting a good state of the art? I'm, I'm just kind of wondering why we needed so much money for that, and I'm sorry, because I missed all the discussion about it, so.
Thank you, Councilor Wyland. Mayor, through to Councilor Wyland's question about that outdoor skating flex space, certainly, it's hard to generate accurate estimates as to what any project is going to cost when you have a fairly short time period, such is what we do here. I think as far as a location of what that, where that may go, and exact configurations, yes, administration is going to have to work diligently, if this is approved by council, we'll have to work diligently to get some things nailed down, but we, there was a couple other municipalities in Saskatchewan that we looked to that did build outdoor skating services fairly recently, and a general breakdown is about $80,000 to $100,000 for the pad, somewhere in that $75,000, $80,000, $90,000 for a board system, then you have the chain link fence for about $15,000, and then if you build any kind of a warm-up shack slashes, amboni, or equipment building along with it, it adds anywhere between $50,000 and $100,000, depending on the extent that you go there, so you're absolutely right, it does add up fairly quick when you get into these types of projects, but what we have seen is that if we want to do it right, like, we don't want to, something built kind of only halfway or half measures, it's probably appropriate to budget this type of a dollar amount to that project, and then we can always, we will come back to council, obviously, as to where it's located, what all features it's going to have, and, and those types of things, and so we'll make sure that, you know, if we can get away, spend, you know, with more locally sourced labor and supplies, and, and bring the cost in under that, that would be great, and we can just allocate some funding to other locations, but we certainly want to make sure we will do it right, but we'll have to kind of await for the final plans on it. Councilor Hoffner?
Yes, I have, like, we've talked about the turning lane there, Centennial Park, and then a turning lane at 21st, and it's, it's turning, turning on 21st Street, there is a real problem there with, with traffic, and it picks up, and if we get something turning the other way in, probably Centennial Park, it's going to create more traffic in there, and I think it's important, it's going to be a safety issue, we need some room to work there, because there's quite, especially when you get tortures going through, it's, it's an issue. Councilor Nordic, that's all.
Okay, as with Councilor Wyland's comments, I was concerned about the $350,000 for the outdoor arena as well, I just couldn't see how that could possibly be, but then, I thought, well, you probably did some research with other communities, and you said you did, so my concern or question, I guess, is if our total, for example, comes to $100,000, our total is, including the payment that's on the next, the next bullet, if our total is coming to, for example, $100,000 less, do we still get that $100,000, or do we just get what we've submitted once you get prices, I guess, or, or are these the prices that you actually submit?
Thank you, Councilor Nordic, no, these would be projects that we'd submit with estimated prices, that we, we are, the city of Humboldt is eligible to spend the entire $843,000, and there's no doubt that the 16th Street water main replacement project, it's, I think that portion alone is about a $550,000 project on the slate for the 2021 budget, it was in our five-year plan to be the 2021 big project, so there's no doubt that if we proceed, assuming that everything else comes in under budget, there will certainly be a project on the list that will consume anything you have left over.
Okay, good, that's what was my concern, would you could add it later on, thanks.
Councilor Wyland?
Well, I'd like to, I, I knew there was a lineup, so, but I'd like to thank you for the explanation on the outdoor skating recreation space, I feel it's very important for the public to know that, because this is a public meeting, when they see these prices, and they think, oh, we got $350,000, and I know that a lot of people have been advocating for, for the outdoor skating, and I'm sure it will be as well, so I appreciate the explanation on that, just so people are aware, this is how much something like this costs, because, you know, we, there's lots of things you want to do, but sometimes fiscal restraints hold us back from doing all the things we want to do. My question then, following up with Councilor Nordic's question about the 16th Street water main replacements, so I take it that's just a very small portion of that project that they leave out, so.
Councilor Wyland, yes, in fact, yeah, 16th Street water main project is again in that $550,000 or better for 2021, and then, of course, we'll follow up in 2022 with the road surfacing work, I believe it's, the total project is, is about a million dollars, something like that, but yeah, this is just a small portion of that 16th Street water main replacement. Okay, Councilor Proctor?
Thank you, your worship. I do, you know, these are, are good problems to have, when you have more money to spend than you expected, and there was a long list that we started with, a lot of the public wouldn't know that, but we brought our ideas together, we analyzed and we talked about them, and I think we touched on some great areas, and we touched about safety in the turning lanes, as Councilor Hoffner mentioned, the recreation aspect of it, and the outdoor skating rink, and tennis courts, and possibly pickleball courts that we've lost in our community over the last 10, 15 years, and Mayor Mitch brings that up quite often about things that have gone but have not been replaced, infrastructure, and, and there's no limit to the amount of money that we could use for infrastructure, and we continue to, to find that, and I think the balance there that we have with efficiency on the boilers too, at the Uniplex, so I commend the city manager and his team for putting together this list, and I think it covers a lot of what we need, and without just zeroing in on one area, it's a very nice balance, so thank you for your work.
Any further questions or comments? I, I think from my point of view, I, I again like to thank the staff to, for their, for their work on this, we all have, like, we started with a quite long laundry list here, and I think what, what we've done is we've balanced, and I think we've tried to balance it through, you know, roadwork and water main work, and safety issues with the turning lanes, and some cost savings, the, you know, the Glen Hall Park reclaimed water for irrigation and partnership, you know, with the golf course, we've, we've, we've struck a partnership on the west end of the city with, with the mall there to use pond, the retention pond at Quill Center behind Canadian Tire to irrigate our Ball Diamonds, this is a similar project on the, on the, on the east end of the city, tying in with the golf course and irrigating with water that's in a pond, as opposed to paying expensive treated water prices from SASS water, like we've been doing, so that's a money saver there, and, you know, the boiler upgrades of Uniplex are going to hopefully save us some money, we're going to a high efficiency units there as well, so there's, there is payback at that, and if we can get basically this money from the province to do something like that and save even more, I think that's a win-win there as well. Going back to the outdoor skating, that's a project that's been on the books for years, we sold that lot at Kalan Village there, a number of years, I'm thinking it's probably seven or eight years ago already, time does fly, but maybe not quite that long, but part of the deal there was we removed that outdoor rink in order to make room for that facility, and, and at that time, I, as I recall, the money was supposed to go back into replacing some of those facilities that we did receive, you know, sales, sale of the lot money for that, and it ended up going into general revenue, and one thing led to another, and pretty soon, there's no money to rebuild the rink, so this is, in my mind, this is a, something that needed to be done, and it's an opportunity that I think we need to grasp here. And we, again, around the same time, lost our tennis courts, and with a resurgence of tennis in Canada here in the last couple of years, and we're looking at, you know, if we can do a multi-flex court that we could put pickleball in there, and maybe some other opportunities as well, it's something that I think some research needs to be done on, but I think these numbers, as the city manager said, are pretty close to what we need to spend for something like that, we're going to, this isn't just a, a rink, it's going to be used year-round in the summer and the winter, so unlike the other outdoor rink that is gravel-based and can't be used over the summer, so I think we've done a, a good job trying to, to narrow this down and get some things done in our community that needed to be done, and, and we're going to be, you know, further ahead at the end of this, that we can take some money that we would have spent on these things and move them down the road a little bit on some of the other projects next year and the year after that need to get done, so. Thank you for everybody for all the work that we've done on this and then moving this forward, and it's going to be good to make a decision and get the ball rolling on some of these, some of them are going to be done fairly quickly, it's going to be good to see some results, or I think that's what the province wants, they want some economic stimulation to make sure that we can, you know, use as much Saskatchewan and local labor as we can on these projects, and I think, hoping that we'll take that into consideration when we start looking at how we're going to do this stuff, so. Okay, any further questions? Okay, so I'm assuming, do you want to do a motion to proceed with these as presented on item A, and then? Okay, so I'm assuming, do you want to do a motion to proceed with these as presented on item A and then we'll do B as a separate motion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if you can get somebody to move the recommendation as a resolution of council, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, so we have resolution, council, be hell, you're making that this. Okay, so we have a motion, uh, second or please, council, Nordic. Um, any further discussion on this? Um, lots of good projects. It's, uh, it's gonna be good to go, go ahead with them. So I will call a question. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Thank you. Okay, and we have item B, counselor, why and we'll give you a minute to leave the room. Thank you. Okay. I'll turn the floor over to the city manager. Um, I noticed that council left as well. I'm sure he'll be back in time for our vote. So I'll turn the floor over to you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, um, the second report that talks about me funding is uh recommending that we proceed with paving portions of Saskatchewan Avenue and a hundred and first street. There's map been closed that kind of itemizes uh the extent of the recommendation. Uh, basically, it's uh from second. Sorry, along a hundred and first street from Second Avenue, South to Saskatchewan Avenue. And then from Saskatchewan Avenue or along Saskatchewan Avenue from Third Street through to the east extent of that roadway. Um, and just into the those intersections of the extents. Um, what we've discovered is that uh. When the property owners that have purchased lots, especially along a hundred first street and South Avenue, when they purchased those lots from the city. They were advised that within their purchase prices was an amount that to be allocated for paving when the city would proceed to do that. Um, the, and again, like you say about some of the funding that's supposed to be earmarked for different things. Uh, we can't really find a good paper trail as to the fact that it went to a reserve and we have established a transportation reserve. Um, that has a balance in it that we would draw down from for the portions that we would uh suggest we did receive, you know, that we received. Uh, an estimated hundred nineteen thousand nine hundred and seventy six from the sale of those properties. And we're recommending we draw the reserve bound by that amount, uh, or approximately that amount. The balance, however, being a hundred and forty thousand dollars for this project, we're suggesting we could uh use neat funding to fund the balance of this project. One of the reasons that uh the city health was holding off on doing any paving work of this area for so long. Was that there was some thought that on the, the growth was happening so rapidly in the city that we would be subdividing servicing and selling the lots on the south side of Saskatchewan Avenue. And even on the east side of a hundred and first street so quickly that we would just wait for that to happen before we proceed. The pace of uh of residential lot demand has slowed down a lot. Uh, and I think we've recognized that servicing anything on the south side of Saskatchewan Avenue. That would mirror what you see on the north side is really impractical due to the depth of the sewer mains and the location of the water main. Uh, if we were to do any kind of development south of Saskatchewan Avenue in the near future, we would likely tie in in just one or two places. And develop a crescent or some cul-de-sacs or something off of that. So I think, uh, if you'd ever, if council had ever heard of why we shouldn't pave. Um, I think we can kind of resolve that, that through some further discussions with administration. Uh, we found a a way around that to relieve ourselves of concerns that we're gonna be digging into pavement, fresh pavement right away. So for those reasons, I think the residents that have formed those properties there for quite a number of years now and and again, have paid their contribution to have a paved street in front of their homes. Uh, it's probably somewhat due uh for that to happen. And so I'd suggest that we can draw a hundred and forty thousand dollars from me for this program. And uh, when the time comes and some lots are developed south of Saskatchewan Avenue or east of a hundred and first street. Uh, they will be sold at a price to contribute back into the reserve uh for uh some amounts uh appropriate for the paving that we did already. Or that we will have done already on Sasuke of an hundred and first street.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, questions? Anybody have any comments on this one? I know we did discuss this at our last executive meeting. Um, just a comment by myself and the city manager did touch on it. And that's the idea that these residences were built and lots paid, uh, paid for with the. With the idea that part of the sale of that lot went towards pavement. And this is one of the, I guess, the first areas of the city that we started doing this for. A lot of times before you paid your lot price and if you wanted it paved, you had to do a local improvement. Potentially and get it paved later on, but this, these people have paid for this already. And I think, um. In all honesty, I think they've waited long enough for this. And I've always had this as being a a guilty thing that we've had to overcome. And this gives us, uh, again, with this money gives us the opportunity. And there was one of those things that a budget time. Um, coming up with another, you know, a hundred and some thousand or two hundred thousand dollars to do something like this was also difficult. And and as the city manager mentioned about uh future development around there. That was the last thing I wanted to see is pave a road and then start digging, uh, digging, uh. Utility cuts into it, uh, you know, the next year or two down the road. So I think I'm confident that uh we're able to work around that and uh. And proceed with this project with this extra money that's come our way. So. Okay, so I think let's uh, let's uh look for a motion on proceeding on this one, counselor Nordic, second or counselor Hoffner. So we have a motion or a motion on the second or on this to proceed with uh paving of uh hundred and first street and Sasuke. So all in favor of that. Is carried unanimously. Thank you. Okay. That project is very fresh. It was approved. Okay, um, item D, uh, new business. So we've got three reports here, leisure service director's report. That's on the Canada Day celebrations on page forty one. So. Um, so leisure services director of on, there we are. Okay.
Hello. Uh, yeah. So this report is just coming to council, so we can have a little discussion, if you wish, on on what we're gonna be doing for Canada Day this year. Uh, and some of the information we're getting uh sent out to residents and posted on our Facebook page and on our website. Um, obviously, as everyone's fully aware, that the event this year will be dramatically different because we have to be very selective in what we're doing uh from a public gathering perspective. So. Um, a lot of the event has been shifted to more of a virtual or a self guided uh type setup. Um, not completely on on uh or completely different from previous years where we encourage people to to take in our playgrounds and our trail systems and and some of that. Um, we were able to keep the golf. Now the golf course is back up and running. We're able to keep that as a, as an option for Canada Day. Um, but some of the the barbecues and some of the things indoors of the aquatic center, mini golf, things like that that we had in the past, unfortunately, aren't able to make um the cut this year. Uh, Jocelyn uh has done a great job uh filling in for Michelle as the program uh uh core manager at this point. Um, trying to come up with other ways, uh, virtual ideas, um, decorating contests, spirit, just to get people in the, in the candidate spirit as we get closer to that day. So. Um, kudos to her uh for doing that. Uh, the one big thing that uh that people are gonna be asking the most about, I'm sure, will be the fireworks. Uh, and whether we're gonna be doing that again this year. So as you're aware, uh, yeah, we are going ahead with that and uh the relocation to Centennial Park. Um, will just allow us to provide um greater space for parking and be uh be able to stick within the guidelines set out by the province to. Keep people in their vehicles or close to and and not be in in large groups like we obviously um became accustomed to at Water Ridge Park when we had the fireworks there. So. So we're excited to see the fireworks be a little bit bigger this year. Uh, and with the location, I think we'll have a lot of residents will be able to sit on their porches and watch the fireworks and. And a lot will be able to come and have a really good uh sightline uh from the parking areas in and around the unitplex. So. Um, if there's any specific questions, I'm more than happy to answer those. Uh, it is kind of uh interesting to think that we came out of another weekend, which um was quiet. Uh, in the past, last year and every year prior, we've had a big forty summer sizzler on our grounds. So it's really weird not trying to put that away and start planning Canada Day. Um, we're just looking forward to Canada, looking forward to being able to do something and and give something to the community. I'll be honest, though, I wasn't overly sad. Um, when I didn't have to be out and have our staff out in the rain and be with my kids on the rides for four days of rain. So, um, that didn't go away, but. Um, all being said, the one year off, we'll be looking forward to bringing that back as well next year. So. Um, but we're really excited to have Canada Day and and be able to give something to the community that we can look forward to.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any comments uh or questions for the director, also why then?
Um, say to comment, I'm a great idea with the reverse parade and having people decorate their homes and. Uh, really nice. Also, the gift card idea that great to support our local businesses at this time. I think that's a really great idea. And thank you for coming up with that. Because I feel it was important that we did something besides just having the fireworks, although it's huge and the other sporting activities. So. Um, great idea. And thanks for all the work you're doing for Canada Day.
And and I will, I'll reiterate, this is doll, this is Jocelyn. Jocelyn's done an amazing job taking this event. So I can't take much credit at all for this, except for saying, yes, Jocelyn, that sounds like a great idea. So. That's what were my kudos and.
Okay, further comments, questions? Uh, I guess I'd just like to close with a a bit of a comment as well. Um, thank you to Jocelyn for all the work that she's done. It wasn't easy to put all this together and uh being that we're severely restricted is what we can do. Um, and I did mention it earlier in the meeting about, um, you know, it seemed like cities are falling all over themselves, trying to cancel everything, including their Canada Day. Um, celebrations, and I'm glad that we decided to go ahead with this. Uh, it looks, looks awesome. Um, it's not like we normally do, but uh the fireworks sound like they're good. I've, uh, you know, I I think we may see some, and I hope we have room for everybody, but I. We may see some people driving here from other areas. I know Saskatoon Council there is, and my daughter has already said she's coming out. So, um, yeah, so it's, it's gonna be good. And I will throw the challenge out to everyone. That the mayor is decorating for the reverse parade. So I've already got a bunch of Canada Day stuff up and uh. My wife uh went to the dollar stores. I think she cleaned them out. Maybe there's nothing left for everybody else, but uh. So, yeah, so I uh, I'll just throw the challenge out there to council or to anybody out in the community. Um, it'd be nice to see a big, long list of places to go drive by and take a look at on Canada Day, give people something to do out for a bike ride or a walk. And. Uh, yeah, so it sounds, it sounds like it's gonna be fun. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, do we need a motion to accept these or can we do them all at once or?
No, do each one. This is a receipt for information one, but yeah.
Okay, motion to receive the report on Canada Day, please. Counselor, why I'm counselor Jorgensen. Any further questions? All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Thank you. Okay, item B is Director of Protective Services report. Uh, um, so I'll turn the. Floor over to the Director of Emergency Services uh on the pumper truck that he's proposing.
Okay, good evening, council. Uh, yeah, before you, it was a report that we are looking for approval from council to. Uh, do up our final specifications and issue a tender for our oldest truck that's in our fleet. This truck is going to be twenty years old in twenty twenty one, and the build time for these trucks is about twelve to fourteen months. So we're just looking at getting a head start on this and uh. The twenty year mark is generally an NFPA or Fire Underwriters Survey uh recommendation of when apparatus be retired. And this truck actually has had significant repairs in the last couple of years. So we're looking at replacing it in twenty twenty one. And uh, this one is a split ownership as well between the city of Humboldt and the Humboldt District Fire Protection Association. And it's a seventy thirty split that was decided many years ago and has been adopted in our new agreement through the association. Uh, there has been money set aside for the replacement of this apparatus in twenty twenty one. What, uh, but it will put us into a little bit of a deficit for a couple of years until we're, uh. I think it's around twenty twenty three that we might be showing a profit again. In our uh capital expenditures. So is there any questions that I can answer for you on the replacement of this truck?
With our last purchase, I know we recognized significant savings by purchasing a secondary vehicle from the mining services. Does that not exist with the potential in this truck? Or is this a specific truck that needs to be built new?
Well, this specific truck, there are some replacement ones out there that are used. Uh, the one that we did purchase through the uh. Uh, Fort McMurray was a specialized truck. So that one was a kind of a unique situation. The jet, basically, these trucks that we find here are already at the end of life and uh for for department like as ours. We do have a number of departments that are locally interested in the purchase of this one. And uh, I do believe for the twenty year uh lifespan of these trucks, it is probably recommended to go to purchase of a new one.
Thank you.
Okay, further questions? Counselor Nordic, you also have a fire department question every time. Sure, you don't have something? There you go.
No, no question for the comment. I guess the NFPA standard is, it's definitely a standard to replace them on that twenty years. And and some of you may question why it may be sold to another department than if if we have to. You know, move it out of ours. And it's, and it's, they recognize that a department, if a department is able to show an improvement. So if you've got a nineteen thirty nine vehicle. The fire apparatus and you replace it with whatever this is with a nineteen seventy nine or whatever. Um, it's gonna be an improvement. And so they recognize that and they accept that as as okay, I guess. And uh. I guess the fire chief can comment further on that, but that's the way it's, it's been for many years. And and it's the smaller communities that have fire departments. You know, they certainly appreciate getting a vehicle of much improvement over their current ones. There's lots of small communities that have very, very old. Uh, fire apparatus. So, no, I think this is the right move to go with the twenty year standard.
Okay, further questions or comments? Um, I guess in in closing, I would just uh like to mention that uh. You know, last time we purchased the fire truck and I, since I've been on council, I think we've done a couple. Um, it's been go to the bank and take out a loan, you know, for half a million dollars or whatever for a fire truck and uh. And pay, you know, pay the interest and everything else. So I think this uh, this is, I guess, uh. The the fleet program that we put in place is um is paying dividends, I think, here. Even though we're short in this uh, in this fire department fund for the truck, we are still taking money out of our fleet program to make up the differences. Am I correct on that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, I, the, in fact, with the fire department, there's actually a bit of a fleet plan even before I arrived here and you were putting fifty thousand dollars away. I think it was for the purpose of the rescue truck specifically at that time. Uh, after we bought the rescue truck and and basically, you know, had enough money in the bank for that. We also evaluated what the long term life is of each of the apparatus uh at the fire department and figured out when it was we're gonna need to replace them in the estimates of what that cost to replace is. In the twenty twenty budget, we increased it from fifty thousand dollar per year contribution to fifty five thousand as a a smooth owed amount as to what it would be required. And the fire chief is right that, yes, uh, this is gonna draw that protective services component of the fleet reserve down its component down, go into a bit of a deficit. Uh, anticipated at the end of twenty twenty one to be about a hundred and ten thousand dollar deficit in that line of the fleet plan. But overall, we've got Public Works contributing to the fleet plan, Leisure Services contributing to the fleet plan, and not all of them are making their big purchases. Next year. So overall, we're applying help. And in fact, by twenty twenty four, um, the fire department is has is contributing the fifty five thousand dollars. Or so each year and doesn't have a big purchase until twenty thirty four. So by the time twenty thirty four rolls around. Uh, they'll have about five hundred and forty thousand dollars in the fleet plan, ready for their next big purchase. Uh, again, it draws it down into a deficit at that period of time, but. Again, it draws it down into a deficit at that period of time, but. We may make adjustments along the way to try and minimize even that deficit that they run there, but. Overall, there's a sound plan to make sure that we're not having to go to the bank, you're right. And I, I think we're seeing that, you know, with the last number of years where we had surpluses at the end of the year, and that money has gone back into funding. The reserves that we have had on paper, which is something that didn't happen years back, so. I think, again, by doing this, we've got that money in the bank that we can do these things with without having to go to the bank and borrow, so. I guess I'd like to point that out to everybody and thank everybody for all the hard work that we do to get these, these funds in place.
Yes, yes, I do have a.
Yes, I do have a question. So now your mic is off.
Okay, there. I do have a question. So the ownership mention of a seventy thirty split between the City of Humboldt and the. Fire Protection Association area is followed by another comment where it says the replacement pumper will serve. The city as a backup pumper and the. The Fair Protection District as their main pumper, and I was wondering if you could explain that because it may seem a little odd when the seventy percent split is paid by the city. Some might think it should be the main, their main pumper and a backup for the, for the rural, so maybe if you could explain that, that would be good.
Well, I actually was not involved with the original splitting of the apparatus at that time, so. It was the previous fire chief that come up with the seventy thirty, seventy thirty split with the association, and I. I have a tendency to agree, and it's something that we could possibly look at next time our association agreement comes into play, we can look at the apparatus.
No, I wasn't questioning, I wasn't questioning the seventy thirty split, I was just questioning the next comment where it's, where the. The city would, this new pumper would be the city's backup pumper.
Oh, correct. So our main pumper is our ladder truck. That's what we use as our main apparatus for, for the city of Humboldt.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to explain. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions on, on this recommendation? Okay, so. We will need a, so this is a recommendation to proceed with looking at a tender process for this then. And let the fire chief go open and look what we can find out there, so. Motion, please. Counselor Jorgensen, Counselor Hoffner. So we've got a motion and a second, or any further questions on this one? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? That's carried, thank you. Okay, and item C is a planning coordinator's report, that's a discretionary use application, storage facility for Westwood Commercial. Commercial district, that's on page forty-six, so planning, Frank here, there?
Yes.
Lead us through this one, please.
Sure, thank you very much. My report is before any consideration, and it recommends that. Council approve the discretionary use applications submitted by Westwood Development. Located on the land legally described parcel in Plan Number One O Two Zero Double Eight Double Eight Five. With the conditions that I've, that I've listed there. The first being an amendment to the existing servicing agreement, and that would show. A rephasing of the remaining lots. A subdivision across the land that would just embrace the, which would create a parcel that would embrace the storage facility on its own. Of course, following the procedure for road closures. And, and there's also the outstanding, outstanding matter of money owing to the city. In relation to this subdivision, so. So for your information, the discussions supposed started about a month ago with the developer. And the hope is, at least, that the develop, to develop the property and begin trading this fall. And capitalize on the peak demand for storage for this twenty twenty season. The city was also advised that the, by the applicant, that favorable building terms could be negotiated if permitted sooner rather than later. And, and I suppose what city administration would like here is that we've provided this background to council and explained the why around the conditions of the approval. But we'd just like to start, sorry, I'd just like to keep on point here that tonight's outcome. And deliberation should focus on whether council support the uses as a storage facility on its merits alone. And being the business that they're undertaking within its locations and whether council support this. The outcome will then follow talks and negotiation around seeing this district correctly being serviced and design standards adhered to. To the city's expectations and also address the requirements of the, the official community plans, zoning bylaw. And, and then we'll seek to set that in stone through the amendment of that, that existing servicing agreement. I suppose a closing point I'd like to make is that, that council be aware. That if the development standards or conditions that we've described here in this decision. If considered to be, to exceed those necessary to secure the objectives of the zoning bylaw. This is by the applicant, the applicant has the right to appeal the standards and conditions presented with this, with this recommendation. So I'll take any questions at this point, if any, if anyone would like to, need to elaborate.
Also be helped.
The question I guess I have is regarding this outstanding amount, how substantial is it? And they have not made any attempt, like, how long has this been outstanding for?
On my file, the last letter I see that was signed by our city manager was from two thousand and eighteen. I didn't get into the specifics in my report, but I'll share with you that the outstanding invoice is for forty thousand dollars. And the, and it was an administrative error, it was the returning of the performance bond from this subdivision. And then there was a remaining five thousand dollars, which was the ten percent. But then the forty thousand dollars was then paid again, so it's not something that was their money, it was just given to them in error, so.
Okay, and so. I guess trying to wrap my head around this, they want, they're telling us that they don't, if they have to repay the forty thousand, they can't afford to build this property.
I've had no comment from them about that, I've brought it up a couple of, of times. And it seems that they said that they would be prepared to come, to go into some sort of repayment arrangement.
Mr. Mayor, we have a little question from the city manager.
Mr. Mayor, I might be able to answer Mr. Counselor B Hill's question a little bit more clearly. You know, when they did the, their first phase of their development, there's a performance bond that they paid to us. Upon completion of all the work, they have it refunded, it was about forty-five thousand dollars. We refunded forty thousand in one instance, had five thousand left to refund. Administratively, somebody crossed some wires and we refunded forty-five thousand, meaning we reimbursed them by forty thousand dollars. I don't think, and it was before my time that I was here, I don't think administration recognized their error for about a year. Through that, some process, when they did recognize it, it took another half year or so to approach the developer to say, we think we've over refunded you, we'd like it repaid back. The response has typically been, okay, well, when I go to my next phase of development, we'll apply it there, or somehow it will apply. When I start doing the next portion of development, so it's kind of been pushed down the road. Are, we have, over the last two years, been a little bit more diligent in sending monthly reminders, so the developer is aware that he's. Then we, and we did give the developer an opportunity to. Talk to us if he felt it wasn't owing back to the city, I think we've come to the terms that it is owing to the city, we've been sending monthly reminders, and this is just, we're saying. Enough's enough, it's been a couple of years, you know, if you want to proceed with further development, you do have to refund the city, the, the money that the city had paid you in error.
Excellent, thank you. That was my point before we approved this, I say that we should be getting our forty thousand dollars back before we consider. Any further development by him, because if this directly is going to mushroom, we can't continue to finance his developments.
Thank you, Your Worship. So what you're asking, or what we're, the decision we're making tonight is a general understanding that a storage facility can go in that location. It's definitely a fair distance from the highway frontage, so the view, although the drawings look very nice. I think it's still something that needs to be set back a little bit further, which is a good plan right now. And it sounds like there's a lot of details to be worked out yet, such as servicing and a few other things that will be going through. The Planning Coordinators Department, and possibly some of that coming back to council for approval, or will that all be negotiated within administration?
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Pratchler, the servicing agreement itself, when we finally get it, all the, all the provisions worked out with him. With the developer, would likely have to come back and get endorsed by council. Most of the other conditions that we've attached to it would be mostly administrative. But yes, once we get a, an amendment to the servicing agreement, so we understand what the plan is for where the water line, the sewer lines, the road construction. When we get all those details. Described to us and in, and to the satisfaction of the Public Works Director and documented, yeah, they would probably come back to council for, for final approvals, so that the mayor could sign off on that.
Okay, any further questions?
So, again, I had originally concerns about not only this property, but other properties along the highway that. You know, that being it's coming into the city, and we all know that there is a certain selection of other properties throughout. Our entrances into the city that are, I guess, unfavorable, and, and I think that highway frontage is something that. Needs to be for more, I guess, retail-type commercial or that type of thing. This, where it sits, I think, is a perfect spot for it, it's towards the back of the lot. They've obviously gone out of their way to make it look good, it's not just a metal building, but it's got, it's got, you know, some, some definite. Features on it that look nice, and it's, I'm glad to see, and it's good to see development happening. We all, we all want to see that in our community, and that's what it's all about, right? We want to make sure that we grow and move forward, so. I'm good to see that, glad to see this, and I think, you know, with one of stipulations being the money that's owed, coming back to the city. In this respect, I think it's, it makes our decision easier on this, I believe, I'm in favor of getting this moving as soon as we can here, so. The question I did have, and I knew you did. The planning directory, director, you did mention about a process of appealing for the standards. Would that include things such as the roadways there? I know they're building a road out there right now, and, you know, I think. We need to make sure that matches our, our road building standards, because. In all these developments, eventually the city does take over the roadways and maintain them and that type of thing, so. I think it's important that we try to stay on top of those things, to make sure that they are built to the standard that we're not having to, to go in and, and make repairs after, after a few years, so. I'm assuming that's be happening here.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, and then we'll go through the Director of Public Works, and we'll, as I mentioned before, we'll set that in stone with the amendment to the servicing agreement.
Okay, so that'll be part of the servicing agreement that city manager got. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think your question was, if he can appeal something, can, can he appeal the road standard?
Yes.
So the answer to that is no, he can't appeal whether we're imposing the road standard upon him or not. What the conditions are, the four conditions that are listed, he can contest that none of the, you know, which ones of these conditions don't relate. To the integrity of whether the zoning bylaw is, is being followed or not, so. There, there is a, you know, some question about, are all of these necessary for your decision as to whether a storage location is located in that portion or not? Those may be subject to appeal, but administratively, we feel that they're conditions that are, is appropriate for council to impose. And if they're appealed, we would defend why council believes these are appropriate conditions in this circumstance. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions of the director or the city manager on this one? I see none, okay, so we need to make a motion to have this proceed. Down the channels it needs to go and. Yep, go ahead.
The money that's outstanding, are we accruing interest on that money for the last several years, or not? And so we've.
Laurie, you're just.
Yeah, Lori, Lori was answering it, but not with her mic on, she didn't want to be, so to Counselor Beal, are, usually we have very little problem with our accounts receivable. And in fact, probably about a year ago, we asked about, because of a situation like this, or perhaps this situation. About absolutely the interest component, what we found was that within our system, there's complications with. Some of our other AR and how it would actually create some issues within our system, so we've been trying to work with our vendor. To solve it so that we can apply interest selectively in our system, so that it doesn't necessarily apply to water bills when it has, water bills have their own program or things like that, so. Yes, it's something we're working on.
I guess that, thank you, that's my question, but I just have a real issue that. The developer has chosen not to do anything until he needs something from the city, and now suddenly, we're having to say, either you pay your bill or we're not going to approve it. There should have been some other financial repercussions to this, in my opinion, as a result of his. Lack of concern or lack of rightness to correcting an error.
Okay. Further questions or comments? If not, I'll look for a motion to proceed with, with the recommendation here, so. Also, Pratchler, second, please. Counselor Wieland.
Are we proceeding with the basic recommendation, recommendation with the conditions?
Oh, yes, sorry, I'm assuming with the conditions, sorry. Okay, so you'll make the motion with the conditions, or, sorry, pressure, and then second here, okay, everyone's. In agreement with us, with the conditions, okay, so we have a motion and a second with the conditions that were. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried, thank you. Thank you for pointing that out. Okay, unfinished business, do we have anything else that we need to add on to that right now? Seeing none. Inquiries, item number twelve, questions, inquiries for staff. Anybody have anything they needed to ask? Counselor.
Yes, I got a call last evening about a concern with the pump house at Burton Lake, and. I was nowhere until he called, apparently that's supposed to be city property. And he's concerned that it's not yet decommissioned, yet it's been out of service for a long period of time. He says the door is often found open and he has to go and, and close it, sometimes he's been called in the middle of the night. And to, to close it up, and there's kids playing around it, and he said, inside the building, there's infrastructure that's forty feet deep. Which would be a huge concern if that's, and he would like to see the city, and if it's in fact, city-owned property. That it be property secured or decommissioned and decommissioned, and that a fence be put around the property, a chain of fence.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm certain it is city property, but I wasn't aware that it wasn't properly secured, so we'll certainly have Public Works. Go and take a look at that and at least address that portion of it, as far as the decommissioning of it from, I think, from the perspective of a. Water intake, it's decommissioned from that perspective, but as far as securing it so that there's no risk or to life or limb, absolutely, we should look into that.
That's correct, he did say that it was decommissioned from, from a water source perspective, but he felt that the property is, is creating a risk for. But he felt that the property is is creating a risk for people in the area and so something should be done for others.
Okay. Any further questions, inquiries for staff? I know there was some discussion about maybe checking into the curving at Woolby and Fourth Street. I think if we can maybe have the Works and Utilities Director go check that out, also, I think. Counselor Beal, I've mentioned about some of the the quality of the. Of the paper, the process that was done there, I'll maybe just let you, if you had a comment on that.
I I have addressed it with this Public Works Manager and he assured me that they had looked at it already, that they were aware and because it was simply a test project. They were waiting for this sort of spring thaw to come out at that point when I addressed it, and he said that they were. Aware that there were significant issues there that were going to have to be revisited as to whether it would be an ongoing thing, however. The other comments about the issues there, I think, should still be addressed with the Public Works Manager, because I don't think he's aware of that, okay?
So, and I think that might have been the process that was used and some of the forming and whatnot that maybe left. After gap on or a ridge on there that needs to be addressed, so. Mr. Mayor, I'll maybe have the Public Works Director prepare something for Executive Committee that explains. What led us to that trial, how he believes it turned out, some observations and concerns along those lines and. And give everybody responses to how that Old Willby and Fourth Street sidewalk rehab project turned out. Okay, thank you, any further?
Well, I guess I was just going to say the the concern I have driving by there, it seems like that curb is. Is. It's a lot higher of a curb than most other sidewalks are, so I'm just curious how it got to be. In in that condition, I know there was some repaving done on Fourth Street at one point and. And I'm wondering if it was just that the asphalt maybe wasn't put back as thick as it originally was. Because I don't think we replaced the Fourth Street sidewalk, I think it was just on Oakley that we did some. If I remember correctly, this was a couple of years ago that I noticed the Fourth Street curb. And now, yeah, it's kind of extended around, although we now has, it's a really high step. Sort of a thing, so I'm just wondering, even from a safety point of view for pedestrians and things. If that's appropriate, and I don't know what we can do about it, other than maybe build the road up higher in that area.
Okay.
And one more. There's an area like the Water Ridge Pond, I'm not sure what the name is now, so. But anyway, during that last rainstorm, it was once again backing up into Water Ridge from the south and. So it was backing up into the pond, it's supposed to be coming the other way and flowing out to the south, but it was backing up and both culverts were full bore into the. Like, so it filled up very fast, it flooded a lot in the grassy area back there and pushed all the den cat tails up onto the grass and that sort of thing, so there's a number of people complaining about that. And also, there's, you know, from a personal aspect, I'm concerned about. Whether we're doing a good job of dredging or cleaning downstream from there to get proper flow to the south, because there's been some changes. In recent times, like, I believe along Highway five on that north side of Highway five, that's that's been reshaped by some of the business people in the area and. And so we have a, I noticed during that storm, there was a lot of water coming in from from the east on the. North side of the highway, which would eventually have to cross back over to the, or cross over under the culverts. I think the culverts are probably too small under the highway with all the recent changes, including, you know, the second pipeline that came in, that comes in that the city built in along. That water. So there's, there's been some changes and I don't think we changed enough all the way downstream to accommodate what the the changes. Have made during heavy rainstorms like we have, so.
So you're.
So somebody could look into that and see, well, you know, maybe. There's, they would need a lot of work and a great cost, but something probably needs to, there needs to be a study to see what can be done. Because that, if if indeed we would have had the second rain that was was kind of forecast or or. Thought to occur, there probably would have been some flooding in that area. Because it was coming up very rapidly, it rose about two now feet, so.
So you're saying the backflow from the south pushed its way back into the pond from either the culverts not being able to keep up or the. The channel going south or?
What I saw when I went to have a look, it appeared the water was higher in between the dam and Highway five. Then it was in the pond, so therefore it was pushing back from the south, yes.
So it could have been water coming in from other areas even, or maybe just not being able to skate fast enough and coming back. Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Nordick's inquiry, I know that the Public Works Director and one of the foremen were out checking the. Drainage channel that evening or the next day, recognizing that there were some obstructions along there from just vegetation and things like that. That they promptly tried to get out and clear, I think it was actually that same evening because of those observations. But it did, if nothing else, made sure, put on their radar that they need to do a better routine of making sure the drainage channel is cleared. But I'll certainly pass along those other things, and if there's anything further that the Director of Public Works needs to add, he can either. Do that tonight or can follow up again in our report to Executive Committee.
Yes, the the people that live along that waterfront wanted me to thank Public Works for reacting to it quickly and. Because it did start dropping that evening, it was actually about three in the afternoon, I think the fire department sent a drone. Out to take photos and I was happened to be in Public Works office when it when it came in and certainly there was a large amount of flooding further south. Long out of the city limits and, but they cleared that out and the water started dropping immediately and then gone down about a foot by the next morning. They wanted me to pass on the thanks to to Public Works.
Okay, good. Any other inquiries?
I just wanted to give a potential clarification to some of the notice things that Counselor Jorgensen noticed. I think the reason why the curb appears so much higher there is twofold, they did cut the pavement away near the curb, so it's sort of angled down a bit. At when I mentioned what happened to put the rocks in there along with the driveways because people were bottoming out. And secondly, they didn't replace the sidewalk, they built a new base on top of the damaged sidewalk, so they've actually made it higher. Not necessarily substantially, but I think the two combined give it the appearance of being significantly higher than what it actually is in comparison to other sidewalks.
Okay. That makes sense, okay. Okay, any other further inquiries? Okay, seeing none, we have a committee of the whole tonight, so. I will ask for a motion, oh, sorry. Okay. Okay, I, we have a motion to go into committee of the whole, so. Counselor Beal, second, Counselor Wilden. All in favor? That's carried, so we'll just take a bit of a couple minute break here and. Anybody needs to get some more water or refresh and we'll.